5:04, sorry, I'm going to start over. This study session of Independent School District 535 School Board is called to order at 5:04 PM Tuesday, 2002, in room 137 of the Edison Building. Today's date is October 12th, 2021. We are in room 137 of the Edison Building. The Board acknowledges this site and all RPS sites are situated on the ancestral land of the Dakota People, and we honor the Dakota Nations and the sacred land of all Indigenous peoples. Interested members of the public will be able to listen to this meeting remotely. Present at this meeting are School Board members, Superintendent Kent Pecel, not voting ex officio member, and Assistant School Board Clerk, Ms. Michelle Severson. Ms. Severson, will you please call the roll?
Thank you. Clerk Amundson?
Here.
Director Barlow?
Here.
Director Garcia?
Here.
Director McLaughlin?
Here.
Chair Martin?
Here.
Vice Chair Nathan?
Here.
And Treasurer Workman?
Here.
This time, we offer the opportunity to say the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. 2.01, approval of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda? Hearing none?
No. I have my own second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. In favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The agenda is approved. 3.01, draft proposal of interim superintendent review tool process evaluation. And I will call on myself to direct this one. It's, as you know, it's the School Board's responsibility to hire and evaluate a superintendent based on criteria that the superintendent and the Board agree on mutually. Shortly after Dr. Pecel came to this district, he brought to the Board three proposed goals that he had for this school year. The Board approved them. We also agreed that midway through the year, we would do a review or an evaluation on progress towards those goals. He will be five months into his tenure next month, and we decided this would be a good time to have that discussion and have that review. You have, sent to you a proposal of what that might look like, and it's sort of two parts. The first part that we suggest is that on December 7th, Dr. Pecel will present the Board with progress towards his three goals. He will also, and this was his idea, present information, an analysis of his own self-evaluation in terms of a number of different criteria. After that presentation, the Board will receive a rubric that includes 10 criteria for evaluating a superintendent. These criteria were taken from a survey that the community took last spring where they identified the five most important areas of expertise that they believe a superintendent should possess, and the five most important personal characteristics they believe a superintendent should possess. So our suggestion is that the Board members will independently do this rubric, and then on December 14th, we'll come together to compare notes on that, probably have a discussion with the superintendent, and come out of that session, likely a closed session, with the Questions, comments, suggestions? Again, this is just a proposal, but the timeline on this would be December 7th, the superintendent would report to the Board on his progress, and December 14th then, Board members would do the evaluation, likely in a closed session. Mr. Barlow?
As I, first of all, think the timeline is definitely doable, and then secondly, I'm glad to see that we're honoring the community input by having that built into the rubric we'll be using to conduct evaluation.
Thank you, Ms. Barlow.
And so, I think the community sometimes struggles with, do we hear them? Do we value what they have to say? And I think this is a great example that, yes, to both. We hear, we listen, we incorporate, and we value.
Thank you. Ms. Workman?
Yeah, I have a question about the dates in terms of, are we allowed to have him do his presentation to us when we have any discussions that night, and then a week later have the closed session on the evaluation? Can those be done in two separate meetings, or do we have to do them in one?
Well, the presentation will be just that.
Just that, okay.
And, you know, as with any presentation, you know, we certainly have the ability to, or the opportunity to ask questions.
Okay.
But I can see that the meeting on the 14th would be a time where we could certainly talk about, you know, our perceptions of that, as well as to talk about how we, as individuals, have reviewed the superintendent in terms of those 10 criteria.
Would we, Director Barlow mentioned some kind of a rubric? Would you have, or would a specific rubric be available to us similar to what we've had in the past?
Yeah, and actually, the email that you received, which lists, again, these were from the community, the five areas of expertise, student learning, collaborative leadership, and so on, and then the five personal characteristics, the ones that the community thought were most important, including honest and ethical, effective communicator, and so on. That would be the rubric. And my suggestion is that we just have those with a Likert-type scale, one to five, for each of the 10.
Okay, that was going to be my next question, and then we would have the opportunity to discuss those during the actual evaluation.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah. Ms. Amundson?
I think it's a great structure. I think using the criteria that the community values is both logical and ethical to the situation, but there are certain criteria on the list that I'm not sure how I would have a chance of a School Board member to directly observe, and I'm wondering what opportunities we might have to gather some sort of data rather than just guess at how we think other people are perceiving it, and/or, but not applicable when we grade it, not rate a certain criteria because we haven't had enough direct observation.
I think that's a really important, important question that you raise, and I think we can do a couple of things. Certainly, Board members, as we've done on past evaluations, would have the opportunity to not only put a number, but also any supporting narrative that we have, anecdotal information, whatever, and we can compare notes that way. Every Board member would have the opportunity to just skip the question and just say, I don't have enough evidence. But another thought that we had was that, at the beginning of our closed session, Dr. Pecel could certainly join us, you know, if that was the will of the Board, and he'd be willing to, and ask him, you know, have a conversation, because a review is really intended to give feedback to the superintendent about things we think that are going great, questions we have, and possible areas where we'd like to see some improvement. Is that what that? Help?
I, it would help if it doesn't address all of my concerns. I realize that this mid-year check-in isn't, you know, the final, more official one, it's just an informal, you know, making sure things are going in the right direction, the opportunity to provide Dr. Pecel feedback for his own improvement before too far has gone through the year. So, you know, I'm not going to make a huge deal over it. If there were, you know, employment decisions being made, then I would think that a more formal way of gauging, getting input from the people who are the people who are most in the position to gauge how Dr. Pecel is doing it. For example, the Cabinet members in this room are the ones who have the opportunity to work with them most closely, and certainly the most number of hours far greater than what I'm able to myself. So if we aren't able to go out and gather input from external sources, then I would maybe not give a lot of weight to the results of the process. But again, it's a check-in, it's a feedback, how are things going, rather than a formal.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Nathan?
I think it's an important point that Director Amundson brings up, but I'm concerned that the gathering of external input, I'm not sure we've established a protocol for that in our, even in our past evaluations. And I've gone back and forth and thought about this, too, in terms of the responsibility of the Board is to evaluate and provide feedback to the superintendent. And I've gone back and forth between whether the self-assessment from the superintendent in that mid-year presentation might touch on these areas.
Definitely.
And that that might be where we might be able to get some feedback in terms of what he's done in these areas in the past six months. I think, as a Board, we'd have to have a broader conversation about how much external input we have in our evaluation of the superintendent, because it really sort of lies in our basket, if you will, and we really haven't had the precedence of doing that kind of formal, community-wide feedback piece before we've done an evaluation before. So if we're going to talk about that, that has to be, I think, a broader conversation.
Ms. Workman?
Well, first of all, Director, Doctor, sorry, Director Nathan was reading my mind because I was just going to ask him if he would be able to incorporate some of these things when you give your own self-evaluation, so we can see how things tie together. But in terms of any kind of a larger discussion, I don't think that's the intention to have that at this time. Am I correct? Chair Martin?
Yeah, again, this is the mid-year.
And this is a review. Correct?
Yeah. Yeah, there will be another evaluation probably in June.
Okay.
Ms. McLaughlin?
Director Garcia, go ahead. Go ahead. Okay. I just had one minor comment, that the MSBA did a webinar training about this topic last week that I sat in on, and they suggested a one to four scale to avoid everyone giving a three, and it not being very meaningful. So we'll decide between two and three.
You mentioned that to me, and I forgot it. Okay, if we do this, does one to four work? Anyone opposed to that scale?
Can we do fractions?
No, no. I think MSBA says you cannot do fractions.
Okay, how about decimals?
No, uh-uh.
Okay.
Okay, so I think that's a good suggestion, one to four. Other questions, comments?
I appreciate it.
Oh, sorry.
No, that's okay. I'm going to be going to the same training, but they're having another one, I think, this week or next week. But I do want to support Director Amundson's overall goal. I think, you know, when you, for any of us who have worked in other places, I've been reviewed in very many different ways, but I think it's always helpful. Like, I can't imagine if, you know, I have a positive relationship with Dr. Pecel, and so that skews my data, but I'm missing all of the pieces of, like, the actual day-to-day work that he's doing. Like, I would want to know. I would want to have that balanced review. So like, I can give a mid-year review and say, you know, two thumbs up, or three thumbs up, or whatever, but I feel, I think maybe what Director Amundson's saying is, I would also like to elicit feedback from those who are actually engaging with him in that work versus us sitting in, like, ivory tower, watching what's happening. Remove.
No, I hear what you're, I hear what you're saying, ivory tower thing. You and I are living in different places. I guess here's my concern. We are obligated to have the focus be on our superintendent and the work that he's doing. My concern is that if we, and the Board has always done that, sort of on its own, that that's our responsibility. If we elicit too much outside input, my concern is that people are going to be evaluating the school district or the School Board, not the superintendent. Because he has been here for a relatively short period of time, I think it's altogether possible that the Board has had, you know, as much, or in most cases, more experience with working with Dr. Pecel than most community members have. And I just want to make sure that it's clean, that it's focused on the work that he's doing, on the quality characteristics that he brings to this district, and not on people's sort of general feelings about, you know, other issues that we're dealing with. So I hear what you're saying.
I think, though, that we could still make, and maybe, I mean, in terms of, like, the shorter term of, like, one, this is a mid-year review, and right now he's interim, but should that not be the case next year, or we have, and/or we have somebody else next year who is a longer-term superintendent, I would want that information, and I think that may be what Director Nathan was suggesting, is we come up with some sort of protocol for how to do that, so that we are evaluating him as an individual and the services that he provides to the district. Because I can say that a lot of the things that I heard on our former superintendent's last board meeting, I did not know about him. And so I would have been providing a review of his, you know, work without having known those things from other people. And I don't want to, good or bad, or otherwise, I don't want to be doing the same thing to our current superintendent, or if there is a other future superintendent.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Workman?
Yeah, would it be helpful to describe this as a formative evaluation/review as opposed to a summative evaluation, which we refer more at the end of the year? So, like a student, you know, we can say, hey, we think you're on track, or, you know, you missed this section of the biology test you need to go back and review, and we teach, and we'll work on that. I mean, that's, that's more help. I'm looking at this mid-year point, I don't know if my fellow Board members.
Well, I appreciate that, too. I think that every review should be, in some ways, at least, formative, you know, it's for any of us, because we're never going to be as good as we can become. In terms of feedback from the community, I guess we could talk about a more formal way of getting that, but my thinking is that in this timeline, we would vote on a process at our next board meeting, October 19th. That would give community members six or seven weeks, people who had something they wanted us to know, to let us know. I mean, they could send emails, they could call, they could whatever, and people who really had feelings one way or the other about the information they think is pressing, we'd hear it. Mr. Barlow?
Yes. So I agree with, it is the responsibility of the Board, not the community, not the Cabinet. Though, having said that, we've always been able to reach out to the community, or vice-versa, the community reaching out to us. As far as the Cabinet goes, we've been able to reach out to them. Should there be, and I think you were not saying that we're forbid to inquire or ask a Cabinet member for clarification or understanding in terms of how they may be working with, or from their positional responsibility, how things are going. I think you're saying that that's okay to do that. But ultimately, it is our responsibility to utilize the rubric to the best of our ability, as we have always done. And in terms of, as has already been suggested, it's important for us to know, ask the Board to know what it is we want. So I thought, well, when we suggested that there be a mid-year review, did we know what we were talking about, thinking about, what we desired, what we expected? I'm not sure at this point, in terms of what I'm hearing, but I think what will be provided, based on what the superintendent will share on the 7th, will be useful. He'll be sharing with us the things he's done, as you've already suggested. Perhaps a lot of our questions will be answered through what he presents, and we won't really have the uncertainty, maybe naturally so now because we don't know what he's going to present, but we will, if we can only wait till the 7th, to find out what he'll say then. And during the course of that meeting, I understand also, we'll be able to ask questions, should we still be not sure or uncertain. So I'm okay with what has been proposed, and support the direction and plan that's been presented.
We have tentatively, or my suggestion was that we vote on this next week. We certainly don't have to at that point. So my suggestion at this point, because we have a full agenda for this evening, think about this for a bit. If you have ideas about how to do that kind of outreach, or if it's maybe not such a great idea right now, let me know. We can revisit this next week, and if we don't come to closure then, again, the recommendation is that we not do the evaluation till December, so we have some time. Could we agree, come to consensus, that December 7th and 14th would be reasonable dates to hear from the superintendent and then to have the evaluation session? Ms. Workman?
Yes, I have a question for Kent. Do you find these dates to be reasonable for you?
I do. I think it usefully pushes the discussion for all of us ahead of the holidays. We could do it in January, but I think there's something productive about getting a bit ahead of it.
Yeah, it's like having all your exams before you have to go home for winter break, three years' college.
Consensus about the dates, anyway? And then if that, unless there's strong objection, we'll sort of, let me know during this next week. If there's, if you have a brainstorm, we can bring that back to the Board at our next meeting. Mr. Barlow?
Well, the suggestion as relates to dates actually will be in the form of a motion at our next meeting on it. I thought I heard you say that we would be presenting this as an action item. Maybe I misunderstood.
No, that you did understand correctly. That was the thought.
Okay.
And the thing is, if we're ready to vote on it next week, great, and if not, we can wait. I think that we want to get something on the calendar, so at minimum, we could agree by consensus that the 7th and 14th of December will be two key dates. Okay, thank you.
One?
Oh, I guess, yeah.
Super briefly, this isn't about me, but just so Board members are aware, longer term, I am a believer in multiple perspective input on both evaluation and improvement. It also needs to be done really well, because it can otherwise, you know. So this year, I think we really need an aligned system of goal-setting and evaluation for our leaders, and so as Board members know, all of the Cabinet members have goals for the year. One of Jackie's goals is to look at best practices for goal-setting and evaluation for principals, because I think we need to think that. One of Carla's goals is to look, Carla, where are you? One of Carla's goals is to look at goal-setting and evaluation for central office leaders, meaning best practices. I'm not adding superintendent to that for obvious reasons, because I'm interim. I think it should be the same for superintendents. Generally speaking, in the work I've done in this space, surveys are good feedback for improvement purposes, but not evaluation. They're short, they're very widespread, so they're very useful for, are you, for improvement. For evaluation, a 360 feedback tool is usually more appropriate because you can identify, people can't, we may not see what Carla said, but it's not as anonymous, and you're doing it with a smaller group, and it's deeper and longer, and that is a more appropriate tool for evaluation. That's tricky with an interim, but, so those are just things going forward that we're thinking about with principal, central office, and I would suggest the same kind of process should exist for superintendents. I'm glad you're going to these MSBA webinars, because I've, the stuff I've seen from MSBA for superintendent evaluation, I think is quite strong, and it would take us some time to build it, but I think we need it at that level, too. So I just want to add that, beyond what we'll do with my mid-year, I wanted you to know we're thinking about best practices in leadership development, essentially, at those levels right now, not the superintendent level, but I'm glad Board members are thinking about that, because it should be aligned.
Good point, thank you. All right, we'll move on to 3.02, School Board Annual Calendar Review. This is the calendar committee, and Ms. Nathan, I think you are going to take this one.
So first of all, I want to thank Director Workman, and Director Amundson, and Severson, and Dr. Pecel. You remember, in the memo that we sent out, this originated as an ad hoc committee of the Board, where three Board members participated, and then Michelle and Dr. Pecel came in, and we did some intensive work the past few months to get to where we're at today. So the intent of the calendar is to provide consistency to the planning of School Board meeting dates and agenda content, and ensure that our agendas reflect the scope of information to be received and actions to be taken by the Board. The draft, as you see, starts in October of 2021 and runs through December of 2022, so we're looking at an actual calendar as opposed to a model calendar. We are going to use this actual calendar as the model, or the baseline template for later years, and we've built into the calendar every September, a time for the Board to sit down and plan the actual calendar going forward, but look at those entries and those dates as what we're actually hoping to do between now and the end of 2022. The calendar has a new, the superintendent came up with this term, and I like it, core rhythm for our School Board meeting schedule. A regular meeting on the first Tuesday, and then a study session on the second Tuesday, and then a regular session on the third Tuesday. You will, of course, notice that that schedule has already been changed a little bit in the draft calendar, because there are some days that we cannot have School Board meetings for various statutory reasons, or there are some Rochester-specific conflicts. But in general, that's what we're kind of looking to go forward, and I think adding that regular study session to the calendar ahead of time is something that the Board has talked about doing for a while. The annual calendar also has a new structure for our School Board agendas. The structure we have now is based on strategic plan from prior to 2013, so the areas focus more on topics that we can focus more deeply on, and they're general categories as opposed to tie to areas of our work, so that we could deal with multiple areas of work based on where they're at in terms of action, or discussion, or preparation. And the categories like information and outreach and focus topics give us an opportunity to look at subjects related to the work of the district, which have come up often in the past in terms of questions, either to the superintendent, or to the Cabinet, or to the exec committee. But by planning ahead, we'll know how many of these topics we'll be able to get to in this time period, but we have a master list of subjects that came up in our discussion that we'll be able to check back against to make sure that over time, while we can't get to them all in a year, as we plan the subsequent year calendars, we'll know what had been covered in the previous year and what hasn't yet been covered, and over a reasonable period of time, we'll be able to cover all of those topic areas. And then finally, the info and outreach is an opportunity for Board members to bring up current topics that might, you know, be the topic of the day or the month. And you'll see later in the calendar, there's a lot of blank spaces for the opportunity for Board members, or Cabinet members, or the superintendent to do that. So tonight, we're looking for consensus primarily on the structure of the annual calendar, so those categories we talked about, and how we're setting up meetings. We do have to make a change to Policy 20302 if we are going to change those categories of our agenda items, and if we can reach consensus on that, we can take it back to the Policy Committee to put that through the process, and then it'll come back to the Board formally, so that we can implement this for the January 19th, 2022 meeting simultaneously with our new board prep process. And with that, Madam Chair?
Questions or comments for Ms. Nathan and the rest of the committee? Dr. Garcia?
My comment is that I
My comment is that I love structure and clarity, and so thank you terribly for working on this, because this makes my brain happy. One of the questions, and this is really just, I don't know if we can or need to do this, but there are certain things that I feel like, would it be helpful if we have, next to the item, like the absolute due date, or when something comes? So I was looking at, for example, like on page 10, under April 12, 2022, the review and respond to recommendations from the American Indian Education Parent Advisory Committees. I know they gave us a letter last year, and then we didn't respond to it in time, and so if we had known, perhaps when it was like actually non-negotiable due date due, maybe that would have made, I think, some of us, as we're like getting the hang of this calendar, to know, yes, if something horrific comes up, we can or cannot move that item. I feel like those things would be helpful, or like, you know, what happened to us with like the SRO contract, it was like an all-of-a-sudden thing. That would be my only extra request, but I really appreciated this, and it helps me, I think, be more effective in planning for myself as well.
Other comments, questions?
Maybe I can just respond. We do have all that, and we tried to keep this simple, and adding it back, you know, once we wanted to give you the, sort of the big picture of this new structure, and we backmapped from those kinds of deadlines, and we could add that sort of as a must-be before X, because there are a lot of also finance things that were like that, that had a date certain, and this reflects that, but we didn't list it on here, and we certainly could when there is one.
Sure. Even if it's just, like, for a board member, the draft, like our draft, if there's extra information on it, or just like a little tab that we can go somewhere, that would be helpful to me, because I'm still learning, especially with the finance, like when we're supposed to be doing certain things, and so it would help to just sit down and look at a full calendar and know that this is our process.
Anything else? Well, committee did an amazing job, so thank you for that. We'll move on now to 3.03, School Board Self-Evaluation Planning. Two issues here that we can discuss. One is, should this board do a self-evaluation? And if we decide that we should, it probably makes sense to undertake the self-evaluation in January. Do we want to, you know, as part of that, we could set goals for the 2022 year as a board? And the second thing, if we decide we do want to do a self-evaluation, what kind of tool do you want to use? So many of you have been through a self-evaluation, or self-evaluation process, a number of times. I'm guessing everyone's been through some sort of self-evaluation. Thoughts on that? Consensus we should, we should not undertake one? Ms. Amundson?
I think it's an incredibly useful tool, not that specific, but the process, but a useful tool for us to take a step back and improve our process. But I think it's important to have consistency to, here was a question about which tool to use, and if we change frequently, then it's hard to measure over time, so that would be my thought. Yes, it's an important thing to do, but trying something else might not help us. It might be helpful to do both, both tools, and then we can choose which one we like going forward, and we would have longitudinal.
So you find value in doing a self-assessment, but good idea to make sure that we do it consistently and use the same tool. Ms. Workman?
Yeah, I think it's, I mean, I think it's a good idea for us to do a self-evaluation. I'm more concerned with what happens after we have to do a self-evaluation, because if I remember, last year with whoever it was who came from MSBA, you know, we were supposed to have school board goals that were aligned with district goals, that were aligned with the strategic plan. That was just simply not doable, because we didn't have enough information to do it. So I think if we're going to do a self-evaluation, we need to plan to have some time after we have the results, to really sit down and say, okay, which of these are we going to do? How do we move forward with them, rather than, you know, I have it in a file somewhere from last year, and it's, I don't look at it, it's a true confession.
Mr. Barlow?
And I echo Director Workman's concerns, and would perhaps wonder if what Dr. Patel suggested earlier, in terms of what the cabinet may be doing in terms of their internal assessments, and could be a tool we could similarly use as far as the evaluation, not the tool, but how we can ultimately respond to the opportunities that the evaluation reveals. And you're absolutely right, Julie. It's great to have this nice formalized product, but it goes no further than simply saying, well, we did it, and it's over, so we move to the next one. And because it's always about how we can do better, and I think we're all, as a board, wanting to be better and to achieve at that next highest level, so.
So it's, I mean, it's really the follow-through or the follow-up that we need to do that, I think, maybe I shouldn't say this, from my time on the board, it's mostly been dropped, the following drop for any number of reasons. This is an opportunity for us to do it, certainly. Thank you, Ellen.
Chair Marvin? We have it scheduled on the calendar in February to have a study session on the results. So if you remember the process of the past, we've had to get on, in the past, MSBA, but on the calendar, whoever we were doing the evaluation with, because we got the tool, we had a certain time to do the tool, then they had to compile the results, and then they gave it back to us, and then we had a study session scheduled to go over it. And we picked February, because we thought it's sort of in a sweet spot of the process of the strategic action plan, and we can make some decisions there, we can look back on our performance and what we said about ourselves, and then we can look forward in terms of, well, do we set our goals now in February, or do we wait till after we see what the strategic action plan, do we set some short-term goals between now and, you know, the end of a certain period? So what Chair Marvin and I were talking about is to get this decision made, so that we can at least put that on the calendar, and get on the calendar whoever we might ask to do the evaluation, or facilitate the evaluation process.
So I'm hearing from lots of you who've spoken that you like the idea of doing board self-evaluation. I don't see any big opposition. And then I think the issue is, what tool do we use? I suggested, too, certainly there are many more than these, in the past, we've used often MSBA, their services, they have an online tool, and I think you have a brief description of that. It asks us to examine ourselves in terms of conduct and ethics, vision, structure, accountability, advocacy, and communication. It's done online, it takes, remember how many, 30 minutes, 45 minutes, maybe, to complete it? Yeah. Anyway, and then MSBA compiles the results, and then we have the, and we get them back. We have the option of having an MSBA facilitator walk us through them and talk about those areas that we feel we have strengths, we have weaknesses, and hopefully, then we'd end up with goals for the coming year. Other thing we could do, and I sent you a link to another well-respected self-evaluation, it's not done online, you get a paper copy, and it asks the board to evaluate itself in terms of its own education, contextual issues, that's how we do our work, interpersonal, analytical, political, and strategic aspects. And we would then add those up and use that as the basis for our discussion. There is not a facilitator that's involved, although we could certainly get someone to come in and take us through that. At this point, do you have strong feelings one way or the other, or any feelings one way or the other? Ms. McLaughlin?
I would support using MSBA, only because, as Director Amundson said, that we can then use historical information. I do recall, as a very board member last winter, taking that, some of, I had to do not applicable, because I didn't know a whole lot, but I found value in the MSBA's comparison to the earlier years, and make your reference to that to give us some context.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Garcia?
Yeah, I would agree, too, because I think that the overtime data was helpful, and because we were so new, it was interesting to see where there were people who had like five yes, we always, and some people who say, no, we never. And so the debriefing process, to me, was interesting, so I appreciated having like a third-party debrief with us, what that looked like, although I do agree with Director Workman that, yeah, we debriefed it, and then what happened to it afterwards. And I was looking at the, and the MSBA one that you sent, and like, some of the questions are really good, but then there's, there are some that don't have like a not applicable, like their number six is, board communicates its decisions to all affected by them. And I would just be like, Heather, did you tell the people? You know, like, we aren't paying that. So, you know, like, that one would not be applicable to us, but that's not an option. Or we would skew low, because we would say never, because of someone else's job, or, you know, whatever. So I think the relationship with MSBA, although I do have some reservations about them at times, I feel like, just because they have a cache of our data, would be useful to us.
I have one more thing to add, just because I did that superintendent evaluation webinar last week. Their process actually aligns the board evaluation with their recommendations for the superintendent evaluation, and I think there's a value in looking at that for consistency with what we're doing. I think it makes a lot of sense to at least consider implementing some or all of what they worked on for us.
Thank you. What I'm hearing, then, is that we want to do a self-evaluation, and I haven't heard anybody object to the MSBA model. And I'm taking your silence as consensus, that we'll go forward with the assumption that we'll use that, we'll contact MSBA, and then get this on the calendar, again, with a session February 15, tentatively scheduled for unpacking that. Typically, when we get the evaluation from MSBA, the tool itself, we get, I don't know, a week or 10 days to get it done, and the results sent back in, and then it takes them a week or so to sort of come up with the gist of what they want to present to the board. But we plan on that conversation happening in mid-February. Okay, thank you for that. You're doing plenty of time with us here. Okay, moving along to 3.04, Future of School Safety and Belonging Planning. Were you doing this, or was I doing this?
I'm studying this.
Okay. Dr. Patel?
So this is, I think, a discussion that at least I've been looking forward to for a period of time, and I sent you a memo that I would suggest might loosely guide board members' discussions of the subject, but that isn't intended to be constraining or rigid, and I think as I turn this back to our chair, I, we could go through question by question, but I imagine it also might be a bit more fluid. But just to frame this, both back when we brought to you the memorandum of understanding on the SROs, and then in several subsequent conversations, board members, a number of board members have suggested a desire for a broader discussion about the future of these issues in our system. The term that I landed on, for the purposes of this conversation, is the future of school safety and belonging. That is intentionally broad, so as not to prescribe what, if anything, the board might like to be undertaking. But this was, in particular, in working with our executive committee, my effort to say, we, myself, and the cabinet, need an opportunity to hear board members' thoughts on this subject, so that we can be responsive. So while I'm sure I will jump in at some point in this conversation, and I certainly invite cabinet members to do so as well, I think our hope is mostly, my hope is mostly to hear board members individually, and obviously, ultimately, I would hope collectively, sharing their thoughts on what, if any, type of additional process the board would like to animate in this area going forward. As I thought about that, there were a number of points, and I put them in the memo, that I wanted to just call out. First is the very broad characterization that I came up with for the purposes of our discussion tonight, which is the future of school safety and belonging. A good way to characterize this, so that's a question. Second, what are the specific issues that if the board wants to animate a process, board members would like to see considered and discussed? Third, what type of process might the board want to see put underway? Because as I think we all know, the outcome is often deeply influenced by the character and quality of the process, and where it goes. Fourth, I wanted, it would be, it would be, not doing my job if I didn't highlight the fact, I know board members are already aware of that, that if we undertake such a process, we should be aware of some other things that are going on in the district. One is, of course, the really significant stress that our students and staff and others are under, including staff around this table during COVID. And that's not to suggest we therefore shouldn't do anything, I just need to be candid, and I think it should be a subject of continued discussion for the board. We are really struggling, we're doing well, but struggling with helping kids recover both academically, from essentially two years not being in in-person learning, and in some instances, behaviorally. And we have got staff across the district working hard to address all those things, and also dealing with some significant issues of morale, but I'm sure it don't surprise you, they're in every district right now, and we are going to be putting in place some steps, both in terms of academic and behavioral support for students, and supports for staff in the coming weeks. So I just wanted to mention that very big context. More specifically, there's two other things going on in this area that board members should be aware of. One, we have the work with Rochester Police Department to implement the memorandum of agreement that you approved, and Scott and Julie Kleiman are in the lead for us on that, so that's something. Right now, on our board calendar, that you just, I think broadly, said looks good to you, we would have a study session on the SRO contract on the 15th, and action on the 22nd. We can talk about the rationale for that timing if you want to, but that was back-mapping from it, so it doesn't happen at the very end. Moving on, really. The second thing is, we had our kickoff today of our first strategic action planning group. Julie and Will were on the organizational culture group. That group is charged also with thinking about school discipline. And it was, as you'll remember, it came up in the interviews I did when I got here, it also came up in our study session in this room. It's not, there's a lot of places school discipline could have gone, because it affects a lot of different outcomes. We housed it there, because we often heard people talking about, and I think Will talked pretty eloquently at the board meeting, about a culture shift. So that group is looking at it, they also have lots of other stuff to do, and I was able to join that group briefly today, but Julie and Will might be able to share that. So that group does have this as a piece of its charge, but it's very focused on sort of discipline housed within the broader issues of culture and belonging. And frankly, that group also, like all of your groups, has the chance to suggest revisions in its charge, and so I don't know if they actually said, we don't think we should deal with that, but they're, we're going to clarify that in the next couple of weeks, for sure. So that's the broad context. Board members individually, during formal board meetings and in informal conversations, have brought up this lens for a larger conversation, and I appreciate the chair's willingness to schedule an opportunity for us to hear your thinking on this. Ultimately, of course, as in everything we do, the will of the board as a whole is what will, of course, you know, be most helpful to us, but I'm sure you all have different thoughts and experiences on this issue, and that's why we wanted to throw it open for conversation now. And so I can kind of, you can open the table, I'm glad to play any role, but I know I'm going to be taking lots of notes, and I may ask for some question, you know, opportunities for clarification and elaboration, but I think we want to be really in listening mode to board members thinking on this subject.
And, board members, you received the memo from Dr. Patel with the sort of five key questions. I'm thinking we should sort of go through those and see what we come up with. First one, I think, is really important, using the term "school safety and belonging", is that the appropriate term that encompasses what these issues are about? Ms. Workman?
Yeah, I'd like to talk with the term itself in terms of word order. I mean, it's I mean, if we were going to use school safety and belonging, maybe belonging and school safety doesn't have quite as easy a feel to it. But I think when kids feel like they belong, when staff feel like they belong, then the whole notion of school safety is going to make a whole lot more sense. So, and we had sort of some discussion about that in our, in our meeting today. I don't know if that would resonate with anybody else or if we would just assume, throw out the school safety and belonging or school belonging and safety term and have something else to take its place. But I mean, we've talked a lot about how are students successful academically and if they don't feel like somebody cares for them, if they don't feel like they belong, you know, what was your term? Or maybe it was somebody else who used the drill and pill term for academics, that these other things have to be their first. And so that's how I would look at that first term.
I actually have something to please on what you're talking about, but it just occurred to me that when you talk about belonging, are you focused just on students or are you talking about staff as well?
Most of the feedback I heard was focused on students. Most of the research would say that schools in which there is a lot of relational reciprocal trust also have belonging among staff as well.
Because I was talking about wording and thinking that we want to talk about student belonging and school safety. Or do we want to narrow it? I, I don't want to raise the staff out of that either, though.
Yeah, most of the feedback I had is it's about student belonging as it applies to discipline, but that's just reflecting what I've been hearing. I think it can be framed multiple ways.
And that actually brings up, I answered this question with the word partially because I didn't feel incredibly confident that it includes the student discipline issue, which I think is really important. I think, I think it contributes or detracts from belonging, but I think it also, at least historically, had some connection to the safety issue as well. So I think that if there's a way to be more explicit, at least in the conversations about these words, I think it's important to make sure we capture that student discipline piece as well.
Mr. Barlow.
And I saw them as, them, school safety and belonging as being two separate things. Felt so strongly regarding that to where I did a little, a small R research on big R, Dr. Pecal. And went to the National Center for Safe Support of Learning Environments where there was a definition for a school safety, being defined as schools and school-related activities where students are safe from violence, bullying, harassment, and substance use. Additional information. And then I think of belonging being something completely different. So, and then SROs, okay. I don't see these being one and the same thing and necessarily being in the same conversation. And so that's the basic board member input I have at this point, just in terms of this first item or question of, is the term school safety and belonging a good term? I'd probably say it's an all right term. That doesn't really help, though.
When I was thinking about these terms, I was thinking about, I went back and looked at the Panorama survey and a lot of surveys. And I was thinking about it in terms of how our students and staff feel about their environment. And I'm glad that you brought up supportive, Director Barlow, because then I was also thinking about what are our students and staff getting, right, to, to impact how they feel? So is it, is it tools, supportive, right, support? So I, I liked thinking about how we could fit supportive environments, supportive schools as well. And then I was thinking about that broader term of school safety and whether, another term I've seen used is school climate, because it's, it's a broader term that isn't just focused on safety but includes it. And then as far as the discussion of the, you know, where, where does the SROs and discipline fit? A lot of that, I think, fits into that supportive schools piece because it's what the school is doing or what the student is, is getting or encountering that impacts what the overall school climate is and then how much they feel that they're belonging to the schools. So I, I add to the discussion supportive or supports and school climate.
This is super helpful to me. May point of clarification. The reason I looked for a broader term is as you'll remember, we were all sitting here, we had the discipline data in one meeting, we had the SRO conversation in another, and then when Will joined, Chris Lingan and Jackie, was it you? Yeah. When Will joined, you really broadened, broadened the conversation in a way that I think resonated with many. And so that's what I was looking for, the discussion was discipline. And then you came and talked about those broader relational experiences you've had in Gage and elsewhere. So that's the reason. And I also take your point, that may problematically muddy discipline and it lose it. So it's trying to be responsive to that broader frame, but, but if what the board really wants to look at is discipline or SROs, we don't need to have this broader frame if it's not productive. It doesn't mean we don't care about belonging and climate. It was an effort to be responsive to that, that discussion that we're basically now, several months later, following up on. So just point of clarification.
Yeah, I really like, oh, go ahead, Will.
I would just like to add, in our organizational culture meeting today, we did have the discussion of, are students feeling like they don't belong because of the way that they're being disciplined? Or was it vice versa? Students are feeling like they don't belong, which is leading to an increased discipline issue. So that was a conversation we did have. The other thing I thought that is important for this group while you're, you know, forming your thoughts is, one of our guiding questions was, to what extent do students from all backgrounds truly feel like they belong in our schools and programs and Rochester Public Schools? We were fortunate enough to have a student in our committee, and the student added, and safe. So we're focusing on how they belong. The student was spoken, or her thoughts were, we need to make sure our students feel safe in our schools, in our programs. So I think we need to include her thoughts in this and honor ways to make our students feel safe and ways to make them belong. I think those are two separate issues, but they have to be addressed.
No, I was going to say, and thanks for that, Will. I was going to say, I think safety is paramount. I mean, that's what every parent knows. That's your first job is to keep your, your child safe from harm, you know, safe, physically safe, emotionally from harm. But Kathy, the term you use, climate, to me, that also encompasses, do kids feel like they belong? Do they feel welcome? Do they feel that the rules make sense? You know, is the discipline, is the, are the rules such that they're, they're equitable and people understand them and it's positive? So I, I think that climate encompasses the idea of welcoming, but it's, it's broader than that. And to me, safety and climate. I was going to say culture. I think that term gets used and maybe misunderstood some, but I like safety and climate.
And I would support that. I'm thinking of the conversation I had this past week with a mom who shared that her daughter went to, I think, Prairie Care last year, but who is now a student at Will, doing quite well. And she went to Prairie Care because she didn't feel safe. She had actually been jumped a couple of times. And though she now is at Well, doing mom's best three A's thus far, but then went on to say that, you know, I'm probably going to enroll her in a smaller district, Zumba or Mizzou, because they camp at the campground, they have a boat, she's met friends there. And she said, used the term a smaller community. And for whatever reason, I thought, less diverse, is that what you're really saying? That wasn't necessarily fair. On my part, I'd have gone there, but I don't know whether that was meant or not. But I think it applies to this conversation of be it welcoming, be it safe, be it climate, you know? It's a subject that obviously I think it's coming upon us to discuss and provide guidance and direction.
Chairman, I actually have a comment on what Will was talking about, that, not to put pressure necessarily on one student to give feedback on this, but I hear what that student said as really two sides of a coin in the sense of, is it a commentary about general school safety in the sense of protecting students from bad things that could happen in a school? Or is it a commentary on students who don't feel safe because of the SROs being in their school environment in such a open way? So I would want to probe more about what, did that mean both of those things or one or the other? That I could, I could take that comment either way. I would be interested in, in more, more discussion about that.
And I think that's a, there's a third option also, is just going, say, from student-to-student interactions also that have nothing to do with the SRO.
Yeah, and I put that in the care of very bad things that can happen. Like what Director Barlow was talking about is I think that there's a balance somewhere in that dynamic. And I think there's so many questions to ask about it that we just have a lot of work to do in that area.
Director Garcia.
Yes, I had a similar, I guess, confusion about how broad versus how narrow we were getting with this. So if we are just talking about that one particular meeting where we had a discussion about SROs and data, the idea of safety and belonging makes sense to me, whereas like climate is our overall goal, like something that we would have as, you know, a full district. Really, the thing that I was working with is whether to keep school in there or not because I feel that there were, we have SROs here present for our meetings sometimes, and there were students that were present at the July 13th meeting that did not feel safe. And so they were not in school, they were in a district building, but they were not in class. And so I was trying to think of, do we only mean in a school building, in school hours? Or are we also expanding it beyond this SRO and discipline data and meaning to be more inclusive of just their safety in general? So I guess if we're going back to the more narrow view of the particular meeting that we're talking about, and we are only, we are trying to figure out how do we bring the idea of SROs and the discipline discussion together into one talk, that I certainly support because I said that in my comments. Like we talk about them as they're separate and they're, they aren't. And then maybe the district climate and like supportive belonging and all of those other things, I think we should be wanting that for all of our students regardless of the SRO decision, regardless of our discipline data.
Let me understand, when you say SROs and discipline aren't separate?
No. Because what we're talking about, the discipline data that we pulled is referrals to our school resource officers. How are those two things different?
Oh, okay.
They're not.
Okay, I hear what you're saying.
It's one conversation we keep having like this.
No, I'm looking at this in terms of, this is discussion of safety beyond SROs. I mean, that, that what we're looking at here, certainly having the SRO and then we have to make a decision about that this year, about whether or not renew the contract, you know, if things are going to change, how we can do things differently. But I'm looking at it too in terms of, you know, not limited, as it says, to the issue of the role of school resource officers. So when there are kids, you know, harassing each other in the halls, that's a discipline issue. It has nothing to do with SROs.
It will if one of them gets referred.
Well, I'm not sure if there's clarity on understanding about what our SROs do or don't do related to behavior issues. They don't, I mean, they don't decide if a student is misbehaving or not. Correct? I mean, they're, they're referred to the office or it's handled in class. Somebody on the cabinet, please correct me when I screw up. Or handled in class, or if it comes to the level where it's a physical fight or somebody's in danger, at that point, it might be referred to an SRO. What did I miss?
Maybe I can ask Scott or Jackie. I mean, I could give my answer to that, but they're closer to that from the perspective of principle of surprising SROs. What is the operational connection between a disciplinary issue or infraction and what the SRO does as we currently understand it? And I will just say, it's clear, there's the lines we can say we're drawing here in this room tonight, and there's what happens in the school hallway when things are complex. But can somebody answer?
Generally, a referral takes place when a law is broken.
So meaning that, that at least in theory, an administrator is dealing with it up until the point where there is a legal infraction.
Right. Do you agree, Scott? It's, you know, disorderly conduct, assault, weapons?
But also the same implicit biases that are at work when an SRO is involved are also present in our discipline data. So those two issues, we can talk about as separate all we want to, but they're not. Like the, the thing that's working behind them is propelling both. Like if Director Marvin and I are two students in the same school, but I, as a brown girl, engage equally as she does as a white girl, the likelihood that I am going to get disciplined at a higher rate than her or disciplined is higher for me than it would be for her. Or my, my punishment would be harsher, I would get punished more often than she would for the same exact behavior. And so the same, what the community has been asking us to look at is that same implicit bias being at work when our school resource officers are available. And not necessarily just the school resource officer themselves, but the inappropriateness of referrals sometimes from educators or other staff thinking because of how I understand to ask for help means call the police, that they are attempting to have them be involved when that's unnecessarily appropriate. And, and I've spoken to people at the police department that have been telling me like they want us to tell them to stop doing that, that that's not appropriate. So I think that happens on both sides. And so when we looked at the discipline data, the kids that were students of color, students that had special education services were significantly more likely to be disciplined and/or have an SRO referral than their white and regular class counterparts.
And Chairman, I think some of this comes from the Office of Civil Rights report, that I think historically these were very blended issues, but more recently, because of our part, there were efforts to separate them. But I'm not sure that the larger community understands that or how deep that that message has gotten into the day-to-day working of the district.
I, I, I know, first of all, thank you for referring to me as a girl. That's the first time in 50 years anyone's said that, so thanks for that. Absolutely, we have referrals to SROs. We also have office referrals. And large majority of those, that's where it ends. And you're exactly right that we, there are discrepancies in our office referrals too, but it has nothing to do with the police. So we've got two different data sets going on there. And I think that's going to be an important discussion that we're going to have when we have our study session about the SROs. When do they get involved? Are they getting involved too soon? But, you know, kids get sent to the office for a bunch of stuff and the consequences may not be equitable. We're looking at the data that shows they're not, but that's not a police-involved situation. That's a counselor, a building administrator, a teacher, you know, working with that kid, giving some sort of consequence to that kid. I think what we need to get back to now, and maybe we should move on to the next thing, is the terminology. So we're talking about safety and we're talking about either belonging, welcoming, or climate. And I think that sort of what we've landed on here is safety, absolutely, safety from harm, and also kids being able to feel safe in a building so that they do feel the climate there is positive and they understand it and it makes sense and they belong. So good luck with that, with the verbiage. So good luck with that, with the verbiage. Move on to the second question, specific questions. Do you want this process to examine? And it sounds to me like one of them is office referrals versus SRO referrals. How often does one lead to the next?
I might just briefly, if the board chooses to have a process.
Oh, right.
Then what would you like it to examine? And so, yes.
Okay.
I think this is all predicate, we just need direction from you on what you collectively would like. And so, yes, if the board wants a process, we will work like heck to put a good process in place. And we need some clarity of intent and process. And so I heard Dr. Garcia just, for instance, give a very specific issue. What is the connection in the continuum between disciplinary infractions and SRO referral? Like that's a very specific issue that we could be looking at with precision. And see, how does that happen in practice? So that's very helpful, that's like a very tangible. So what are the other specific issues that are on your mind? Implicit bias, that's another very specific issue that maybe if the board wants to have a process, we could be putting in place. Feedback on, looking at research, you know, all the stuff that we might do if you want to have this process.
And I'm going to go on what Director Garcia said as well. Because one of my frustrations in all of our discipline data conversations is the way the discipline data has been collected and looked at was first molded by the Office of Civil Rights requirements. And then it was molded by the Minnesota Department of Human Rights requirements. And we never got any feedback from the Minnesota Department of Human Rights on our data. We did what the Office of Civil Rights Agreement told us what we needed to do, but it wasn't really in response to the data. It was more in response to what they had laid out for us. And there've been a number of districts, and I think Dr. Pickel is a good resource for this, who have looked at discipline issues, office referrals, law enforcement, looked at the right way to look at the data. The way to look at the data, sort of going back to our last study session, looking at data that is tied to then looking at different ways of doing things or different outcomes. So I agree that if we're going to have a conversation about this, we should look at the data we've collected in the past, but maybe in a new way, in a better way that's tied to how we're operating. And is more reflective of what's happening in Rochester as opposed to another model that's been superimposed on us by the federal government or the State Department of Human Rights.
So if I may, then, another model has relates to SROs? Or what specifically are you referring to during the interview?
No, I'm looking at other models on how other districts have studied discipline data and discipline practices and the resulting discipline data. And then how that discipline data has then modified their practices to improve the disparities. Which could include SROs as a practice, but it's broader than just the SROs.
Yeah.
I would say yes to Director Nathan and add in yes to Director Barlow's point. Like I, my two asks really was what I want as a contract presented to us that will be the actual document that we're being asked to vote on and not this antiquated contract that we had and promises that via an MOU, they'll change all the things we want to because we waited until the last minute to get it passed. Like I want to look at the thing that they say that they're going to do in its entirety and be able to vote yes or no on that thing. And I also want to be presented with workable alternatives to an SRO, the SRO program. So when one area of public schools is doing something, St. Paul Public Schools, Minneapolis Public Schools, I mean, they kind of just morphed their SROs into something else. But there are safety specialists, there are student safety coaches. I want to see not just, yes, we love our SROs and this is why they should stay. I want to also see what other possibilities are out there. Because I don't think that we can claim to be an anti-racist institution that's explicitly proclaiming that black and brown and indigenous lives matter when we only make changes that make us as adults feel more comfortable. Having all the people in this room just acknowledge that the systems work for you and that they may not work for the rest of us and that's affecting the students. We need to make necessary changes to dismantle oppressive systems that negatively affect primarily our BIPOC communities. And that's not just our students, that's also our staff. Because how much are we bleeding staff of color to? And that's because they do not feel safe and they do not feel like they belong. And even in systems like this, where I hold power in this room, there are fellow board members who gaslight me. There are cabinet member, one in particular, and the chief of police that won't even look me in the eye when we have these discussions. And I am the only woman of color on the board, one of two women of color in this room and one of four persons of color in this room. And as far as I know, the only queer person, I have disabilities. Like I come with all of the things and my heart goes out to all of those students and staff that look or live just like me. But the people that are supposed to be protecting them aren't because they don't see how systems like this affect them or us. So I think, again, my two asks are, I want the actual contract that they're proposing, not one that we're going to say yes to and work on as we go. And then at least one other alternative to what we would replace it with, so that I have options.
Thanks, Madam Justin. So you're thinking that we really need to do a study about what other districts are doing, what other alternative models are already out there and how are they working?
Right, and I think, I mean, to go, I think this is probably number four. So it's like, how do we do that with what resources? You know, and the superintendent notes, obviously, the pandemic COVID, but there's two, COVID and racism, and they're both important. We both, we need to respond to both. We just had a ton of passionate community members apply to be on subcommittees for the strategic planning group that didn't make it. And I feel like that's a resource we could tap into. They were already willing to participate in something, like might we just use them? There are already districts that have this in place. And might we just reach out in good faith and say, hey, we're considering this? Like I'm board member X, like might you share this with us? And we give it to whatever committee is going to manage this? I don't, I don't feel like the resource, I feel like the resources could come together if we're creative enough. But I get that we're stretched, but this is important too.
Chairman, I agree with Director Garcia wholeheartedly and appreciate her comments and, you know, the insight into that. I worded it this way as far as my ask. How can we completely rework the SRO contract to better reflect our joint interests? Is what I heard from the chief. I mean, I think he needs to put his document behind the words that he used at the meeting. So reflecting our joint interest in keeping school safe in the world that we currently live in.
Can I ask you, I apologize, can I ask you to say it again? How can we rework?
How can we completely rework the SRO contract to better reflect our joint interest in keeping school safe in the world we currently live in?
Is our hour with Rochester Police Department is the other hour?
That's how I phrase it, in the sense that that's what I heard RPD saying. I'm still not convinced that that's what they're doing. And I want to hear more about that.
So I think both of you are suggesting that we need to, there are two things here. We need to completely rework the contract and make sure that if we sign it, what we sign is what we know is going to happen. And we should also look at other ways of keeping our schools and our students safe that may or may not include the SROs. What are other districts doing? What other models are out there? So it can be one or the other. Mr. Barlow, sorry, Ms. Anderson. And you know what, just, I don't think we need to do the hand raising thing.
Do you want to go first or?
Go ahead, please.
So I think what I'm going to say is along the same lines of colleagues who just spoke, but I might say it in a different way. But, so I've been thinking about this for a while. And while I don't have the experiences that other people have as people of color or communities who may not have a positive relationship with law enforcement, I can listen to the people who have told me how they feel. And I can share my experiences from when I was allowed to go along to the SRO ride-along. And so what I learned from that experience and what I've learned from people I've listened to is what feeds the recommendation that I'm going to make. Which is that I think we need to start over from the top and look at what our SROs do in our school and in a group, a working group or a task force with specifically selected people who can represent a variety of perspectives, answer the question, what is working and what isn't working? And once we have that question answered, then I think we can do what Director Garcia was talking about, looking at what other districts have done. And we know there are districts who have changed things over the last couple of years due to the high disability events that have happened both in Minnesota and around the nation. I think we can learn from them, but I think it starts with examining what is working and what isn't working. And then proactively and creatively brainstorming, using that information we've learned from other districts to redesign what that would look like in Rochester. It may be small changes, it may be big changes, but we won't know until we've gone through that process. I want to make it clear that I hear multiple perspectives and I don't have the answer. But I think that the truth, there's many ways to see a particular item. And I think the truth is all of those things in combination. It is working for some students, it is working for some adults. It isn't working for some students, it isn't working for some adults. I think all of that can be true at the same time. And I think we need to assess what will work for the vast majority of that, if it's possible in a perfect world to get to all. I can personally say that, I've shared this before, but I'm going to share it again because it continues to look at me. The image of seeing a fully uniformed officer with a firearm patrolling the hallways, and it isn't intended to be patrolling, I'm certain it's intended to be making connections with students and being visible. But from an outsider's perspective, when I was there, it looked like patrol. There was a fully armed, fully uniformed officer wandering through the cafeteria, giving the kids high fives. But for somebody coming in from the outsider to a new student or to somebody with a history, coming from a population that has a history of not positive relationships, it was a very intimidating view. And it really did look like somebody patrolling and giving the impression that either the cafeteria isn't safe from external threats or that there were kids in the cafeteria who were threats. And this is an example to me of what isn't working. Maybe working for some people, but it wasn't working for me. And I can bet that there were a lot of other people it wasn't working for. So I think it needs to be a larger process, a longer process, an introspective and thorough process of, we're used to it. Those of us who are in the buildings and those of us who are in education, those of us, those of you who have been doing this for decades. But the kids coming into sixth grade at a middle school haven't been doing this for decades. And what is their reaction when they see a fully armed, fully uniformed police officer in their cafeteria? So I think it needs to be a larger process. And I think it needs to be thoughtful and not rushed. And I think we need to recognize that, you know, Rochester has some unique characteristics that smaller districts or non-metro districts or any of those types of things, that it's going to take some study. So that's my request, that it not wait until it's too late to do that larger process and we have to spend another term. And I want to reemphasize, having the right people as part of that process. Having a wide variety and not a exclusive process of including voices. I realize that for the strategic planning, for the timeframe and efficiency, that not every voice was able to be heard. But if there are voices who want to be heard and aren't allowed to participate, then it's not a process of this.
Thank you. It's fine, we've started moving into some of the next questions. What I'm hearing so far in terms of issues or questions that if we do this, we want to address include difference between disciplinary infractions and SRO referrals, questions about implicit bias, questions about how we collect discipline data, how do we examine data tied to different outcomes, how other districts are handling safety and safety within their schools and models that they're using. We want to look at, I think we want to look at who, and most users touched on this, who are the people we need in our school to keep our kids feeling safe and also being physically safe? Those are some of the questions that we would want to address. We've moved into then questions three and four, sort of, if the board decides to direct administration to implement a process to examine these, what steps, perspectives, and other components should the process include? Jess, you suggested, for instance, some of those people who volunteered to be on the Strategic Action Plan committees and didn't get on. We've got a group there who said they were interested in being involved. I think that would be a great group. Melissa, you suggested a task force. I think certainly we can ask, have to involve our students. And maybe the question, this goes back to number two, for our students is, what does a safe school look like to you? What is it going to take for you to feel safe in this place? What needs to be here? Who needs to be here? Are there other, well, for that matter, in terms of a process, steps, perspectives, other components? We, I think, right now are having our students do the panorama survey, is that right? And there's a lot in there about how they feel. I mean, that's something that's being administered already, so we'll have that data too. Are there other steps, perspectives, or components that a process like this could involve, besides ones we've already discussed?
And Melissa, I should have took you up, I should have went first. So speaking of, so I was thumbing through the calendar, looking for the focus area of memorandum of understanding. Didn't see it, maybe I overlooked it. But aren't we on the clock, so to speak, in terms of? So in terms of other things, Scott, I'm going to put you on the spot, if that's all right. But you're professionally trained to be on the spot. So what have you utilized in the past? You, the district utilized in the past and evolved the MLUs. Did you convene a group of people outside of RPD and/or the superintendent? Or, I mean, what, again, not to make you feel awkward, but what input sources were you able to draw from that maybe we aren't aware of that could perhaps add additional light in terms of what sources we maybe need to look to as we consider future MLUs?
You referring to the last SRO MOU group that just deleted this?
Sure. Sure.
Have you referred to? We had a, we did a lot of work. We had a wide variety of people that had individual input into this. We utilized a lot of this supervisory staff at the Police Department. We utilized the DEI person from the city of Rochester. We utilized special ed representatives from the district. We utilized the equity specialists, the discipline coordinators through the district. And there was a survey that was done with all the students that we utilized the data that we got from that. There was a survey that was done with all the parents that we utilized information that we got from that. The equity specialists went out and met individually at the high schools throughout the spring with the students and obtained information about their feelings on the SRO program. All that data was brought into our collective group. We discussed it, we went through it all. Each individual that was in that group had an individual say and was listened to. And we collectively worked on the MOU that was, that we thought was, with the limited information we had from the board as far as what their expectation was, was what we put together.
Okay, thank you. Just to kind of clarify, so again, not to, the calendar committee did a great job. Did I not see it, overlook it, or was it not included? Just an oversight?
Just an oversight. Our assumption was we would report to you on the progress of the MOU when we came to you on the contract. So it should have said SRO contract, when we have study session on the 15th of February and potential action on the 22nd. In that study session, we would also be updating on where we are with the memorandum of, is it understanding or agreement? Memorandum?
Understanding.
Understanding, MOU. So it did say that in previous drafts and it somewhere fell off, but that would be what we would be, that was the timing, that we would, it's a whole study session on it. So we would be bringing you both an update on the MOU and then, I mean, obviously the reason this discussion is so important is, were we to, that contract by my understanding has not been revised for a long time. And so were we to have direction from the board to open that contract up and do a revision if we were going to stick with this timeline, which is intentional because it gives the board then lots, and the city I guess, lots of time after February to make changes and do stuff. It's intentionally, not at the end of the year. We would need to begin working now to look at revisions to our contract because even the MOU did not change the contract. I think that my discussions and many of you've had similar discussions with leadership in the Police Department is that there would be, well, openness to revising the contract. Now, I don't know what that would mean on their part, but the contract, at least as I've talked to the chief or Lieutenant Thompson, the contract is not sacrosanct from their perspective. I don't know what the openness to a different model would be and could that proceed in tandem with looking at other options? That's relatively, well, more than relative, that's actually quite clear direction. Like, we could do that. I, you can feel me eager for the will of the board with some level of clarity. So if we could say, we're going to work with RPD, please don't hear me as recommending this, I'm just trying to verbalize this back, this is your decision. We could work with them to bring a revised version of that contract concurrent with analysis of other options, concurrent with, I think to Director Robinson's point, some what's working, what's not working analysis that we might be getting. I am nervous about doing all of that well in the midst of everything else we're doing, but like, we can have the capacity discussion once we get some clarity on board intent.
My vision was more of a, don't look at the contract until we've done a larger needs analysis.
Okay.
And say, if we started over and we, what all our needs are, how would we meet them potentially in a new model? I am not at all recommending either that there not be a relationship with the Police Department because I think there are some benefits. I don't know that that should be what the foundation of everything is. So I think if we looked at what all our needs are and in a perfect world, how would we meet them whenever possible, not requiring law enforcement involvement? And then at the end of that process, we might have needs that involve law enforcement and a whole new contract advocacy approach. I think it would be a mistake to take something that exists and then tweak it when maybe the something that exists isn't necessary in to the extent of what we're currently using. I'm not presupposing the outcome of this process either. Perhaps, you know, what we see is a need to extend SROs to all buildings. I'm not saying that that's a good thing or a bad thing, I'm just saying I'm not going to presuppose the work of another body of people who would do this work.
I had one more topic to include in the list of things to consider if we're looking at this topic is, are there ways to individualize the SRO role for the needs of each individual building? Perhaps have different models for different buildings based on what the needs are of that building. I also look at this from more of a social justice perspective in some ways, that I view this as a way to evaluate the relationship with the Police Department. And I look at it from this perspective is that I think both the district and the Police Department asking the question, how do we as a district respond to incidents of police violence on a national level and a local level? And I would love to hear both the SROs or other officers openly talking about police violence and how they view the national events as police officers. I would love for them to talk about that with our students. I think that would go a long way to repairing some of the damage that's been done, at least the first steps. I would go further in not just police violence, but also the militarization of the police force in general. That's another topic that I think it's important for people to hear from our local Police Department about.
Okay. Go ahead.
When I went back and looked at the history of the conversation that we've had on SROs and thinking about contributing to this tonight, you know, at the time, I felt the same time constraint that Director Garcia felt when we were talking about this. And at the time, I did a lot of research on what other districts, and there were a lot of districts at the time, over the summer and into the time where we were talking about they were undergoing the same process that we were. And you're right, for example, Winona had extensive focus groups in the community and survey, and even though we did a survey, you know, it was who answers it as opposed to really making sure that we've hit all the constituencies that Director Robinson mentioned, the voices that have to be at the table. And I guess at the time when we were talking about the SRO contract and the MOU, I understood it as a separate, two separate activities. We were approving the contract because we had time constraints, but we wanted to see more and we couldn't change the contract, so we put with the MOU to really define what we hoped would address a lot of the concerns that we had at that time. But it did not take off the table, a comprehensive review of best practices in the use or non-use of SROs in school districts. So when I saw the February timeline, I thought that that could be something we could consider, you know, working along a timeline to make a decision by that time, but based not just on looking at what was happening here, but also in looking what was happening and how well it has or hasn't worked. So I'm dovetailing off the comments of Director Garcia and Robinson and Farlow, but my question would be to the superintendent then about feasibility of that kind of work. It's something I'm interested in, but I'm also willing to hear what that means in the context of everything else that we're trying to do.
I can just, the February timeline was not based on a broader process, it was based on the MOU that you approved and bringing that to you and update on that. And then, again, this evening's conversation has been important, potential shifts in the contract. We would sort of take a look at it. I'm very nervous about a really high quality process between now and February if there was broader looking at it. While I know we could call Winona and call some other people, to do this right, it's very doable, but it's not simple to do it, to do it really, really well. It also is the kind of thing that could be, as we decided with our strategic action planning process, it could benefit from external facilitation and finding an entity that can do that well, it's very doable, it's just February is soon. I mean, it's, you know, we're way into October, so we could take a look at it. Right now, the board has not yet directed a broader process and so the February timeline was contract MOU, a broader process. And we would take a look at, you know, depending on what the goals of that broader process are, and we could bring back to you a revised timeline depending on the scope and goals of that process. But even if you just think about the fact that I got here in July and we had discussions about whether we should do a strategic action plan, which is different, but it's a collaborative analytic community in the process, we decided that in July and we're kicking it off today. And so it took us that long to just put, you know, the pieces in place and now we're going to be working on that through June. This is different, but again, we would really want to make sure we treated this, you know, very carefully so that we really brought kind of analysis and feedback and input and research that would be helpful to board.
So, and that brings us to the question is, if we do this process with an administration that is, has its plate overflowing with responsibilities, how do we get this done? Who is going to lead it? What are expectations in terms of implementing the process? You know, finding answers to the questions that we've asked? Can you suggest an external facilitator, for instance?
And I might just interject, this question and the next one, really, I feel to some extent, they're more just to ground us in reality. I'm not sure, if you have feedback on that, we can do it, but I'm not, that's our job. Look, we can figure that stuff out with clarity of intent from the board. I just wanted to be sure that, you know, absent somebody grounding anybody, myself included, in the environment in which we're working, we might envision an incredibly intensive, multifaceted process that would, we would struggle to implement. And so I don't know, for this question and the COVID question, certainly board members' comments on them are welcome, but I feel you've got my message, which is that we have to scope this so that we can do a good job. And we'll do a good job and we'll bring you, but we just need clarity of purpose and then we can, and then we can work, we can work back from that. And I know you'll understand when we say there's only so many hours of the day and there's so many resources, and also getting that kind of input has to be respectful of the capacity. One of the issues with this effort, should the board choose to undertake it, is that we really have got to get the perspective of the people individually most impacted by it. So kids who are directly, not just from communities, that's critical, but individuals who have been caught up in the disciplinary and SRO infraction. I think Director McGlaughlin's point about the SRO perspective, you were saying it from one perspective, there are also just, that, we need to get the, and I know Scott did a, worked very hard on this on the MOU, we didn't really bring that to the board. What is the individual SRO perspective in this? Many of you have talked to them individually, but we've never elevated that. So we would need to really replant in a process. And as we have clarity from the board, I'm confident we could do it. It might require revision of that timeline somewhat, but, you know, that's what we do.
I'd also like to point out that some of the voices that we need to hear from are no longer in the district.
Such as?
Well, the people who it wasn't working for.
Okay.
Who may have gone on to other educational options or may have left entirely. And so while I respect that there was a lot of internal outreach that took place, I think it's important to point out that that's not all the voices.
And I would take on to that, Dr. Patel, that one of the pieces of feedback that I got after the survey that Scott talked about with parents and students is that it was a relatively low response rate based on the timing and when it was done, but also people didn't necessarily feel comfortable sharing their feedback because of, you know, self-identifying themselves in certain ways. So I think that that's something we need to consider as well.
I heard similar things. There are people that reached out to me personally to give feedback but did not participate in the survey. Some of them because they felt that they would be easily identified, some because they are no longer with the district because the system wasn't working for them. And a lot of the feedback that I also got from community members is that every time we have a discussion about SROs, it's, the voices that we do hear from, it's like a pro-SRO parade and there's no like critical reflection on things that we could do better except for when there's discussion from the board about whether we're going to extend contracts and things like that. And so it comes across very much one-sided, which is why my ask is to, yes, my understanding is that RPD is committed to coming up with and revising this contract because they wanted to to begin with and we just didn't give them enough time. And I also want other options because I felt like we were getting pretty close to, there were a lot of people like not comfortable 100% voting for the contract the last time. And so if we come up again, I think one of my concerns was, I don't want to vote this down and then have nothing in terms of safety for students to replace this. And one of my big issues with the contract language is that if, there was no explicit mention of like, the kids are the enemy and that's how that contract reads, is that we are asking them to come in here because they are, the kids are the problem, when really it's, we are supposed to be protecting them from other things, not protecting us from them, I guess.
Thank you. The last question, and I'm not sure, I think maybe we started covering what you're talking about or asking, how the implementation of the MOU with RPD relates to the Strategic Action Plan? Now, I'm thinking that every committee on Strategic Action Plan is tasked with talking about student safety and that's going to be part, I think, part of the discussion no matter what area of education we're involved in. Are you thinking that the MOU should come up in those groups too, or?
No, I think it's just important for board members to be aware that you approved that MOU, we haven't reported back yet to you on how it's going. It does have change elements in it. They, I think, you definitely, you know, need, Scott and Julie and others are charged with working to implement that. So certainly when we came to you in February, I envisioned a robust update on the MOU itself so that we don't forget that because we have change efforts there we need to execute against. The action plan point is just also be sure the board is aware that that is an explicit charge for the belonging group in the action plan. So it's one more source of input for the board and for thinking, I mean, hopefully what comes out of that is how belonging and discipline fit into a larger stretch for the district as a whole, but we'll see. And I know that Julie and Will were, had their first meeting today and there's a lot that group has to cover. So it's just making sure the boards where there are other, one of the mistakes that can happen unintentionally when people are as busy as we are and as our organization is, is that we now focus on this new effort, forgetting we've animated these other two that are also charged with looking in different ways at this issue. And so that's, that's really the intent of that question. So I feel like we've kind of covered it. I guess, just in terms of suggesting a step forward, this has been, this has been very helpful. I wonder if, and I'm thinking on the fly here, so the chair can throw it out or take it for what it's worth, if board members would be interested in taking this conversation and sending to perhaps the chair as concise or detailed a statement of what, if any, process they would like to see unfold informed by this conversation and then sharing that across the board for your collective reflection, hopefully leading to some level of, I'm not sure you have to vote on this, maybe you do. I mean, in some ways, I'm inclined to say yes, but also I don't want to overly make things formal, that each board member has a chance to say, this is what I think we should do, is what I'm supportive of. You have a chance to look across those statements. Maybe we can get to real clarity and consensus from your individual perspectives. Maybe you look at the individual perspectives and say, Maybe you look at the individual perspectives and say, we're not in the same place, we maybe need to take a vote and see where that vote ends up. That's just one thought off the top of my head, and we can just let that linger or you can react to it now. But the board members would have an opportunity after this meeting to, to do your own thinking and then send to the chair what, if any, process you think you'd like to see unfold, and we can share those across the board and see if we can come to some level of clarity and consensus. Or two, or two or three options that you could select from, one of which might be no process at all for some of you, and one of which might be a very robust process that has certain components.
I, my feedback on that is that some of that contemplation, contemplation is great to take home and do individually, but as soon as we start sharing ideas not at a board meeting, I would worry about whether or not we're following the community's law. So I think having people summarize and put their thoughts on paper and read each other's summaries isn't necessarily gets up in meetings law, but I think the discussion of what comes out of that, maybe.
Okay.
Well, and we could certainly do that at a board meeting. I mean, I would be happy to, to collect, you know, this has been, for me, this has been really, really useful. Because right now, I'm thinking of two or three things that have come out of this that I think we really need to do that. And so I would be happy to just collect your statements and then have them available to everybody at a board meeting for further reflection. And I kind of think that maybe we're going to see some themes that are going to rise to the top, things that we really agree we need to do or we need to avoid. I don't, I don't know that it could hurt. I mean, we, I don't think we can share them in between, but absolutely, I'll collect them and then make them available at a board meeting and...
So we're sending directly to you, not everyone?
Yeah, just to me. Or, or pick someone. I mean, it doesn't have to be me. It really doesn't have to be me. But to one person, who would then make the list?
Only step I was thinking, and I think your point is a super important one, was, you can tell I'm trying to really lean back a bit here and say, what's the will of the board so we can get some clarity? I also, though, don't want to suggest that we aren't here to support you in this staffing, this effort. So I was thinking of an interim effort whereby board members might say, here's what, here's what I'm thinking. And we would try and take at the staff level those statements and see if we can suggest, based on what you think individually, one or two distinct paths forward that reflect your objective. So it'd be some staff work before we would actually bring it to a board meeting. We don't need to have that step in there, it's just that seven different statements that are all maybe really perfectly aligned after this conversation and maybe quite distinct could be a good subject for a board discussion. It also could be really kind of a progress freezer because you look at seven different ways forward and, and how do you resolve that in a public meeting? So that was, but I take your point about the dialogue being what, that's what meetings are for. Maybe it's a subsequent set, item on a subsequent study session. Maybe there's this statement of individual priorities and then this, this is in the next study session for you all to revisit and attempt to resolve?
I would have to say that I like that interim step by the staff because I, I think in terms of the annual calendar now, right? And where it would fit with annual calendar, if we were to do a process, where it would fit with annual calendar meetings, where it would fit with the strategic action plan groups, any surveys that were going out or focus groups with the strategic action plan? And we don't have that information as board members. So if we, if we said we wanted a survey, for example, as part of an examination of the SRO situation, you and the staff are better able to say, well, we're already doing this for a strategic action plan in this month or this week or whatever, because that was part of the issue of the last SRO is we had three surveys going out to the community at the same time on three different subjects. And that was definitely survey overload. So we want to try to make this...
At the time that the building's reopening.
At the time, right, exactly. So we want, we want to make sure this isn't getting lost, whatever the process is.
And I, just to be clear, what I'm suggesting, you would all still see each other's priorities. I'm not suggesting that would be somehow like, we would simply say, you'd still see that, but that we might see if we can do some staff work to support a path forward that ideally the full board could support or at least gives you two distinct options that you could take a look at or three. But again, we don't need to do that. This could be a fully board-generated process as well.
I like your suggestion because I think it would move things ahead. I think sometimes we talk about things conceptually at the board and it doesn't get a lot of traction sometimes. And I think we might need staff assistance to turn our thoughts into action plans.
And I would want to add to the discussion, I did like what Director Amundson was saying earlier about some sort of task force, I'd like that to be considered. Also, if you can give us, you know, a week to get things.
Oh, yeah. That, you would add that to your statement, like, I would like a task force, so we have it, like, you know, we, you know, I would like to look at different models in other school, like, you know, that your, your pieces, you know, so that we'll look and see, is it possible to, you know, suggest a convergence or, again, do we suggest option A and option B that are, that are reflective of board members' input and don't lose anything? But to try and do some clarification and synthesis so you can make a decision.
Jane, and you indicated earlier that you were tracking similarities or common themes. Could you, not necessarily verbalize those again now, but maybe send those out later for us to assist us in the development of or acknowledge that if they're already in existence, no need of us creating them anew if you already have them.
I've taken notes.
That's fine.
That'd be helpful.
Okay, those would be bullet points, but sure, and spelling won't count, so.
Right, well enough to be, but...
Okay, so are we, are thinking that, I'm sensing people think good ideas just to send in, you know, these are sort of my priorities, my priority, my priorities. Do you want those to come up? And I'm sensing go through the administration first. So do you want us to send them to Lori or I could get them and then forward them to you?
Whatever's easy for you. I mean, I think, the point is, we're not going to change what you send us, that's going to come to the full board, but we would try and see if we can create some synthesis from among that. So whatever really your preference is, Chair.
Well, if that works for you, just send them to me, I'll, I'll include them, verbatim, how you write them, and your spelling will count. And then forward them to Kenton. Hopefully we can get that done within the next week, maybe. Okay, anything else?
I'd like to have at least a weekend in the, in the timeframe, because I think more clearly we've got it.
Okay, it won't be until next week, sometimes. Good, okay. And I do accept late work.
Yes, we know.
Without penalty. Okay, I didn't convene this meeting very well, so I'm really going to adjourn it.
Can I raise my hand, Jane?
Oh, so close.
Because we were talking about belonging and, and students, our middle schools are offering a virtual viewing of a movie called Angst, and it's called Anxiety Is Treatable, It's Okay to Say, on October 28th at 7:00. And it's going to be a movie with a, with a discussion. Our, our mental health and wellness teams did such a great job with our parents last year during distance learning on their webinars, and they're going to be leading this. And it's the first of a series of three movies that are, one in January and one in April. So this might be a great way for us board members to maybe even sit in and hear what what parents are and students are saying about it and pass it on to your, to your networks.
Do you know if that's going to be available, if there are conflict, schedule conflicts that night, is it going to be available with you later?
The, at the community and family and community engagement meetings, they, they were talking about those, but each middle school is going to host one of the three, as Kathy said, and they should be available for a week afterwards that you can look in and watch the recording.
Thank you.
Kathy, how do we get to that?
I can send it, please do. Is it on Heather, is it on our social media?
It's supposed to be.
Okay.
It's on Kellis, so we'll share.
I think it's on Kellis, yeah.
But yeah, I'll send it out. Thank you, that's, that's important. Thank you, Kathy. All right, as I said, it is Tuesday, October 12th, 2021 at 7:04 PM in the Edison Building, and we are adjourned.
Good job.
Good job.
Very well.